Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the September seventeenth meeting of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors. Ms. Steele, will you call the role?
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orth.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Crisco.
Here.
Mr. Bizani is absent, and Mr. Nikosia.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Will you all join me in invocation and pledge allegiance by the Reverend Kevin Smith?
Let us pray. Most wise and eternal God, our Father, it's once again that we call upon your most holy and everlasting name, Lord, just to say thank you. Thank you, dear God, for this another day, God, and thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come and assemble ourselves together here tonight, dear God, as we discuss the meeting of our county, God. And we pray, dear God, asking you to be in the midst of our meeting, dear God. We ask you, dear God, to grant us your wisdom, knowledge, and revelation, dear God, to do what it is that you will have us to do. And, God, we pray, dear God, for our first responders, dear God, in our county. Lord, we pray, dear God, for those, dear God, that are in our schools, and, Lord, and ask you to keep them safe, God, and keep them in your care. And, God, we pray, dear God, that everything that's said and done here tonight, dear God, that you will be able to get the glory, the honor, and the praise, and that it's done decent and in order. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May seventh.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item is adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next item is matters presented by the board. Dr. Orth.
Yeah, just briefly, um, I'm trying to keep you guys appraised of the stuff that I'm trying to do with, uh, some of the roads down in Guinea and down in Kappa Hosek. Uh, you know, as I said, I... So, uh, you know, like I said, I met with Lee, you know, a while back, uh, came up with a plan. Uh, they've made some really fantastic improvements, especially to the road at Big Island, and the next steps are gonna be, hopefully, they're going to try to deal with the ditches. I've got to talk with, uh, Mr. Kevin Landry about a berm that apparently is keeping the water from coming out of Big Island area. So, uh, there's some steps ahead, but I think, again, the problem we have is, you know, water comes in, but it just can't get out. So we've got to figure out a way, not just for the ditches, but other places that will, you know, facilitate and ease the problem of, uh, the flooding, which, as of today, we had one and a half feet of water above mean sea level, above predicted. So, and I rode down, uh, to Kappa Hosek yesterday when their tides were only half a foot, and that road, even though it's been raised a few inches, still has water on it. So, uh, yeah, it's just something that we, as a county, and I know, Mr. Crisco, I know you took some people around recently, showing them our low-level areas. You know, the Guinea area is, is the hardest hit area when it comes to flooding. So, anyway, you know, I'm trying to, you know, do what I can to help the few people that are down there.
Thank you, Dr. Orth. Mr. Crisco.
Just curious to know if staff has been in communication with the fire department based on the board's actions from a month ago yet, if there's any been any further discussion?
Well, that's a perfect intro. So I did want to tell you all tonight that we are getting ready to go out with the CIP, uh, request to staff, and so we've, uh, Maria has, uh, sorry, Ms. Callaway has drafted a letter specifically to the fire, to both fire departments, asking them to fill out the form and to specify on their, uh, as much information as they can on the narrative. And so the only thing that we did in changing the form is we did take off the bottom section, which is where a department head normally fills out alternatives. We didn't wanna open that door. And so it'll be going out to them probably tomorrow, and then it'll be due the twenty-second. And we've also told them about the procedure, since it's new to them, about coming to the planning commission and then the CIP budget being, um, presented the first, uh, first part of January.
Anyone else? Let's move to county administrator items.
Okay, continuing on with things. Tonight at your, uh, desk in front of you, um, is a, just a draft suggested list of things that might be good to discuss at a board retreat. And if the board would like us to, I'd like to get some indication in time, maybe for the, um, the meeting preparation, if you would like to have the item put on, uh, the October calendar for when to set up the board retreat. The things that are on here, I went ahead and listed an approximate timeframe, so you could kind of see, I mean, there's, you know, I don't, I don't have a, a crystal ball on this, but they're just approximate based on how much discussion I think there would be versus kind of presentation. Um, some of the things like, you know, a foyer, we haven't even spoken to Mr. Wilmot about yet, but that's something that, you know, if, if the board would like to have that during the retreat, uh, we would do that. Um, so the main thing is to be thinking about it and, um, whether you would like to have it discussed formally of when to do the retreat. If, if I had a preference, I would prefer for the board to do this in this calendar year, so that I could have, and the staff could have a better indication about your priorities with the budget. So if there was time to fit it into December or November, that would be great. And I'll move on with other items. Uh, the comp plan survey that I've sent information out to the board about, and also we've done press releases that will start on Thursday. So the survey is only for the people that are asked to compete it, or to complete it. Similar, I, I know that the state does this, um, for their, one of their annual, or every five years for the outdoor survey, and you kind of feel excited if you get the, the request because they're doing a random sampling. And there will be plenty of opportunities for other input from all citizens as we move forward and have, I'm sure, many different town halls and other surveys. But the idea for this one is to match comparatively with our census data. So the companies in city, if anybody gets a survey request from Zen City on behalf of Gloucester County, it is legit, and we look forward to the feedback there. Uh, some good news to pass on. Last night, I was able to see, uh, with the staff from Parks and Rec, Katie Legg received the James C. Stutt, uh, Stutz Fellowship Award, Fellows Award, sorry, which is, the Fellows Award is the highest honor that you can receive by the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society. And, um, her acceptance speech was kind of filled with, uh, this was my last time and, you know, happy, it was, it was just a, a big shock for her, but it's, it's an honor for her and the career that she has had, um, within parks, recreation, and tourism. More good news, the county had submitted a letter of interest to see if we would be selected for doing a two-fiftieth grant, um, for work within this structure, and we were asked to fill out the full grant request. So we'll go through the, the full amount. And the only thing that was a little disappointing was we heard how many millions and millions of dollars were requested. So it's gonna be very competitive, but we're on the historic register. It's a great place. It's the proper error, uh, era, and, um, there's a lot of, it's, there are errors that happen here, though. There are good things that happen here.
Might be better with error.
But it's, I just think we'll have a very competitive grant. Um, as I think you all may remember, Steve was working on the EV charging grant, and, um, that went in, and so it's also been submitted, um, to finance and to go through the county attorney. And Senator Kane wrote a very nice letter of support for the application, so we're very pleased with that. And I think the, just the last thing I wanted to mention, I had an inquiry, uh, late this afternoon from a citizen in York County through their, uh, York County Administrator with concerns about the conditions at Gloucester Point Beach Boat Landing that's owned by DWR. And, um, we've had a number of complaints about the potholes by there, and I explained that they have been repairing, because they've been down there several times, but every time there's storms like now, they get really bad again. But they have funding to redo the whole parking lot and the two finger piers in their capital improvements budget this year. We've met with them, so I, I said, I think by spring we'll see all new, and it'll be in much better condition. So I think everybody's just sort of trying to limp along through the winter to get to the new construction.
Are there any proposed changes down there?
Not, it, this, no, there are not. We have talked about, uh, meeting with, potentially with VDOT to discuss some changes and, um, parking underneath the bridge, but nothing with the Department of Wildlife Resources.
I meant for the parking lot. Are we, we're not changing anything?
No, that's, I mean, it's just redo it as is at this point, unless we get...
We're not reducing any boat slips, boat?
No.
Okay.
Not gaining any, not losing any at this point. Thank you.
You mentioned...
Yeah, Ms. Steele, um, I know we have a grant rider for counties. Um, how are we doing in general grant mission with this individual? Just kind of a summary.
Uh, Clara and I, is it Vaughn? Thank you. Clara Vaughn from, uh, the Planning District Commission is the person that we are, that you're referencing. She is doing a phenomenal job. Uh, we, we went to eleven-by-seventeen piece of paper to keep up with all the grants that she's doing, and we're gonna have to go to two sheets. Um, there are a number that are still in the hopper, and there's been a couple that we've been turned down on, but we wouldn't have even gotten them in. Um, and I mean we, meaning the whole middle peninsula. So she did the processing with Steve and others on the EV charger, and she worked with Parks, Rec, and Tourism on a trails grant that unfortunately we didn't get. But the, they've got a really good possibility with three different grants for West Point with a park there. So she's, she's doing great. And, um, Ms. Callaway is gonna be bringing forward, uh, a document for the board quarterly with the quarterly, um, financial report that lists all the grants that we do, because in addition to the ones that we're doing through the Middle Peninsula PDC, there's a lot of independent ones too, especially with the Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be good to know, you know, active ones and ones that we've been successful, just so that, you know, individuals, especially citizens that have heard about this, whether we're successful or not, you know, obviously, you don't get anything unless you try.
Right. That's why I asked her if she would start adding that as a quarterly report to the board.
Anyone, anything else? All right, let's move to citizen comment period. You'd come forward, state your name and magisterial district, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Since everybody's coming up, we'll make it five minutes. All right. We'll move to the work session agenda. Uh, twenty-twenty-four flood, uh, flood plane management plan. Mr. Baines.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, gentlemen and ladies.
Appropriate weather for tonight's discussion.
That's right, yeah. Uh, I was down at the school's DLT this morning, and they did have some delays down in the Achilles area because of tides. So yes, we're, we're into that part of the, uh, the season right now. Uh, in your agenda packet on, um, page twenty, it mentions what this is. This is the Coastal Flood Plane Management Plan. It was adopted in two thousand nine and was re-adopted in September of two thousand fourteen and two thousand nineteen. Our CRS rating, that you know we've increased our CRS rating, requires updating and re-adoption every five years. So we're here tonight to have you re-adopt it. The proposed five-year plan incorporates recommendations from the board's adopted annual updates and recommendations from our Flood Plane Management Board. Uh, the departments that have input reviewed it, as did the board. So the one that's in your packet, starting on page, uh, twenty-two, is the one up for approval tonight. Uh, in it, it goes from page twenty-two to page two hundred. So that tells you the type of information that's in it. I'll give you just a few of the highlights. Uh, first one is that, uh, in this one, we had raised, y'all had approved raising our base elevation to base BFE plus three. So that, uh, is included in this. The new, uh, firm maps that are the flood, flood maps, they came in in two thousand twenty-one, so they're included in this one. And the third thing is that our CRS rating went from a six to a five, and that gives our homeowners that get flood insurance a twenty-five percent reduction in their flood insurance, um, cost. Uh, other things of interest in it you might find is that on pages thirty-seven and thirty-nine, our new maps that show all the storms that have crossed across us. Um, they used to use a numbering system, now they use just the names, but you'd be able to see those maps. They'll be in there, so you can see all the ones that came near us or by us, from Elsa to Gaston to all the others. Uh, the hazard mitigation activities, um, uh, we have a high-hazard dam, the Beaver Dam Reservoir, so we do planning with it. We've got all the permits and stuff we've discussed with utilities, but we have a, um, a tabletop that we're gonna plan for this fall with, uh, emergency management. Uh, the last thing is that all the page numbers in here will change because of all the additions and, um, reductions that, um, Ms. Kernan told me to tell you, the page numbers you see aren't the final ones, that when we get done, if you approve it tonight, once we get rid of all the red line, oh, that's the last thing. We didn't follow the norms that, um, Mr. Wilmot and y'all like, where we bold and lined through. We had started this with everybody input and stuff, it's tracked changes, so you'll see all the changes in red in this versus the bolded black. Uh, that's it. Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Baines, thank you. I think for the people that are watching, it might be nice, just a very quick review of what rating we were and where we are now and why of the, because of the work that our committees are just, you know, for the public and maybe the press that might be here to write about how we have tried to serve the citizens of our community in the floodplain area. Certainly. So the CRS, the CRS program, the CRS ratings is a voluntary program. So it meant that we weren't required by the state to do it. So as, as a board, Joe voted to have us do this. So CRS ratings go from a ten, that's the very bottom, to a one that's at the very top. Uh, as you work through, each level that you go up is based on the type of information you provide. So we do a very good public information campaign that goes through and lets people, especially in the flooded areas, understand what, what the causes are and, and the ways they can protect themselves. So with those new flood maps, we identify all the homes that were repetitive losses, the ones that are in flood zones, and ones that are areas that are outside the flood zone that are localized flooding. We send them all letters every year reminding them that they can, uh, apply for flood insurance and protects them. Uh, we go out with all the different information, like we were talking about today, where in the schools and our Beehive and our online newsletter, that flooding, uh, one of the little campaigns that I know you've been very strong on here lately, but I'm sure everybody else has too, is clogged culverts. If you don't get the culverts clean, the water may come in but may not go back out. So those things all go on because of this. So with the CRS ratings, for us to work towards a one, uh, I think we maybe two, you get, you get inspected every five years. So we went from a, um, a seven to a six five years ago. Last year, we had our, our review, and we went from a six to a five. That means that we had to do a, um, a fair amount of, uh, policy changes, the things we talked to y'all about, like the BFE plus three. So it's us looking at what the ISO, that's the Insurance Rating Association, what they require for protecting homes, and we use that information through our CRS ratings to get people better home insurance, flood insurance on their homes. Percentage has gone from, what, to twenty-five percent? Oh, it, it, early when we, when we first started, it was at probably fifteen percent. And now we're up to a twenty-five percent reduction in your insurance. So once you get flood insurance, if you're in Gloucester, you get an automatic twenty-five percent reduction. And I think to go hi- or higher to, like, to one, it gets much harder, right? It does. So right now, we have done the legwork for a four from the things we can do, from the public information or a, uh, open, um, an open land, uh, planning. But the real issue now for a four is we have to work on a lot of the policies and procedures that we'd have to bring back to you that we would adopt. So that would be things that the building official would have to, uh, try to support, emergency management and others. So for us to move to a four, it's a lot more work. Now, I will mention that, um, in the state of Virginia, there were only, uh, two fives. It's us and James City County, but Henrico decided to start doing this about a year or so ago. So they put a team of like six people on it, and they've come in as a five, as a start, but they just started their, their flood plain management in the last twenty-four months. But, yeah, so we're one of three that have the highest rating in Virginia. And some of our, um, counties around us don't even do CRS, so that they don't get that discount on their flood insurance. Might be a good story for Quinn to put together. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll let him know. Uh, any questions? Yes, sir?
How did our repetitive losses go down?
Uh, because once, we, we either bought those homes when we were doing the buying of the land, or we've taken those homes and raised them so that they don't become a repetitive loss, because when the flooding comes in and out, it doesn't damage the, uh, the home itself. That's why we keep on talking about, we've got to figure out ways for water to get out fast. And that's the problem down in Guinea right now, is that the water comes in, it's gonna come in. Right. Figuring out how to get out. Get it out fast. The culverts and the different things that we're trying to work on, and, and the ditches, the problem, like in down in Guinea, the ditches have grown in, and they've gotta be dug out. Sure, and, um, I, I will tell you, I, I'm not speaking for VDOT, but I know that they, they use a, um, the same machine we use for our sewer lines. It's basically a jet truck that they can flush things out, and that's what they use to go around to clear those... The culverts, right, but they've got... Yes, sir. They do the culvert, but you have to go back and exit. I mean, if you have a culvert that's cleaned out, but then you've got a ditch that's full, it doesn't make any difference. Absolutely. So, yeah, I think we need to continue to put the stress to VDOT that, you know, especially areas that flood regularly. That's right. The ditch maintenance is as important as the culvert. The ditch maintenance is really important. And I know there's an issue with, you know, the invasive species that is taking over the ditches, but I think we can get around that, given that this invasive is the katsu of the March. I, I think, uh, I think it was up near Amensville. Y'all had pointed out one of those areas, and VDOT's gone in and worked that area, and I think the next one may be down somewhere near Big Island Road. But I think that they are aware of what we keep pushing towards them, so, well, as they have resources, I think they're doing some of that. Uh, any other questions?
All right, there's a resolution on page twenty-one.
Yep.
So moved.
Ms. Steele.
Dr. Orth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crisco?
Yes.
Mr. Nikosia?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the initial discussion of legislative agenda topics for the twenty-twenty-five General Assembly session. Ms. Steele.
With all the national political news, we gotta get on our part, looking at the state and what's coming up. Uh, it is that time of year, and in preparation for bringing you all a draft document, we, uh, met with a leadership team and asked them to check with their state associations and if they had any particular bills or things that they were issues that, um, they needed to make us aware of to do that. And we also passed that on, like, we've received a, um, a reply from the Clean and Green Committee with several environmental issues that they'd like to see supported. I have met with the Hampton Roads PDC. It was their meeting, um, with the, um, county administrators and city managers. Uh, we reviewed the draft plan that'll be going to the full HR PDC, and same thing with the Middle Peninsula PDC. We had the county administrator and town managers meeting. So some of the issues have, uh, will remain on, but I, I wanted to point, if you all choose to, for them to, um, but I wanted to point out a couple of things. Um, with the Hampton Roads PDC, the, the issues, they don't put them on the list unless everybody agrees to them. Some of them still don't necessarily affect us, but the ones that probably that you would be, um, most supportive of is their continued funding support for the flood preparedness fund, similar to, um, Middle Peninsula, but it's, they have a little bit, um, a different spend, and I think they would like to see two hundred million added to that. They also have, um, funding for the flood sensor program, and this is something that started there, and they have, uh, potential for two hundred sites to have a sensor that will detect flooding and tell you the actual road if the, if the water is on the road, and it connects into the Waze program, so that as people are driving, it will direct them around the floods. And, uh, with over two hundred in our area, there are about twelve in Gloucester that if that program gets funded, but they, they want three-point-one million to put that through. Uh, on the, with the, um, Middle Peninsula area, there, we had Delegate Hodges at our last meeting, and there was discussion about trying to do something different with solid waste, um, not solid waste, with sewer, um, waste. The Middle Peninsula counties that don't have, you know, for their pump and hauls and for all the things that they don't have a facility, they have to truck it over to Newport News. And they would love to see something closer, and, um, I think it's something we want to do more discussion about, but it sounded like Delegate Hodges might be interested in helping. You all have heard a number of times from George and, and Katie and, and others, back to Mr. Dawson, about the pump station that's up by Food Lion and that it needs to be improved, as well as the other pump stations. That might be an ideal location for an HRSD pump station that would go directly into, or we, it would be ours and it would go directly in and feed, um, instead of taking waste from other locations, because that would handle the hospital and all those places. But also, it could be, um, a lot shorter trek for, um, vendors who are having to go all the way to Newport News. So I, I don't know much about it. It sort of came up at the meeting, um, and I expect we'll, we'll hear more about it. Um, from the blue chart that's on the, uh, on page two oh two, and looking at some, again, differences, I've mentioned to y'all in county administrator reports that, and I'm, in fact, I'm missing right now the, um, Middle Peninsula State Park Planning, Master Planning Committee, because they're meeting tonight too, but they have removed the boat landing from the master planning project. And, uh, if you, it says fund to build out both the state parks. I don't think that's an issue necessarily that, but when it gets into the definition, it talks about building the boat landing. So I would, would like some direction. I mean, I'll work up a draft, but if y'all have any specific direction of how you'd like to handle that, um, that would be great to know. Uh, I have put in a call to, or I put an email over to the, um, clerk of the court. Um, I'm not sure, I, I think the recordation tax situation got straight. I was trying to look through the General Assembly. I know our funds went up, but I couldn't find where it was necessarily a light switch that changed on the fifty percent, why we weren't getting as much money, and now we are. So I, I'm asking whether that needs to still stay on there and, at least for suggestions for you all. Um, let's see. The PDC, um, funding, they did receive twenty-five thousand more this year, but they asked for a hundred and fifty thousand per PDC. The Hampton Roads PDC, you know, I don't remember, I guess I wasn't paying enough attention to it, um, but years ago, that was, it was the Peninsula PDC and the South Side, and they combined them. But when they combined them, they only gave them one share of funds. So I think they're wanting to take a new tactic as, as much as they're doing, and unless they re-divide them again, they should be getting double the funding. So they'll, um, be asking for something more there. Um, the judgeship that's number thirteen, the, last year you all supported with a letter to the appointment of the new Circuit Court Judge, which did come to be, and I believe you're gonna get a similar request for a, uh, general district judge. Um, I believe we're like in the highest number of cases and have been for like six years in a row or some, uh, dramatic statistics. So expect that there'll be a request to support an additional judge there, too. Um, the transportation funding, which specifically, uh, mentioned the, um, the Coleman Bridge too. I, I haven't gotten any, uh, feedback, but I reread it again today, and, um, that's, uh, number four on page two oh four. I mean, there's transportation funding, just, we always need more, you would like to have say-so and how it goes and those kind of things. But, um, I, I think number four isn't badly worded as it currently is. I, I, you know, so again, if y'all reread what was submitted last year, and if there's things that you think are not appropriate, or you'd like to see changed, please shoot me an email. Um, I will be checking on, um, number six on page two oh five. There's been so much that's been happening legislatively with cameras. There's still, um, I believe there still is an issue with the right-of-way problem, um, with not being able to use certain kinds of cameras in the right-of-way for the flock, like, to catch license plates, like they just caught the, the shooter recently. Um, and then number nine, the funding for the victim services grant. I haven't heard from them this year, but I believe the problem that they indicated, because it's really at the federal level and it comes down from the state, I don't think it's been resolved. I think that's still gonna be on there. Um, and I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions, but I'm kind of ready to roll up the sleeves and start, uh, getting this thing together, and you'll have an opportunity to, um, review in draft and also hear the, the, um, school... And you'll have an opportunity to, um, review in draft and also hear the, the, um, schools report before you finally adopt it, the first in November, first meeting in November. Questions?
One thing is that, um, we should talk about anything regional with Pump and Hall, they have to go all the way down to Nazman in Suffolk. It isn't on the peninsula, so it's so far south that you do something for Middlesex, by the time they drive down there back, they get one load a day. And, and I verified that while you're talking.
Thank you, I, I.
It wasn't in, but it was Nazman.
Yeah. That's it.
Any questions, comments?
I have no issues with this.
All right, let's carry on.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, Mr. Wilmot.
Why am I on the agenda?
So you can say you're happy to be here.
Okay, I'm happy to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmot.
Not on work sessions.
Not on work sessions. Boards and commission reports? Supervisor discussion? And then Ms. Steel.
Peace, when you say, say my peace. Did you know I thought it was, um, P-E-A-C-E, but it's P-I-E-C-E, it's your peace. I thought it was like, saying my peace, I'm making my peace. But no, I didn't know that. Not 10 years ago.
It was word of the day.
It should have been his county attorney.
Yes. I know Ms. Steel mentioned it, um, think about when would be a good time to have the retreat. And we'll go from there, that way we can get back with her. Uh, no closed meeting, only one other item on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting adjourned.